And let your light shine on this great and wonderful city, Lord, that we will continue to follow you and obey your will, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Salter, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. Tames? Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andress?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
So we do have a quorum. The next item would be the reading of the minutes from the February 25th, 2019 meeting. Chair would welcome a motion to dispense with the reading and approve said minutes.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next item is the reading of the minutes from March 11th, 2019. And again, the chair would welcome a motion to dispense of the reading and approval of said minutes.
So moved again.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. All right, board vacancies. We've got a couple of challenges and perhaps a couple of approvals. We have an applicant for the Arts Advisory at Large, and that has been closed as of, wait a second, as of today, yes. So Ms. Andress?
I have not heard of anything. Ms. Salter, have you gotten, have you received?
Well, we have one individual, Brian Collins.
Oh, okay.
The only application I've gotten is from a Mr. Brian Collins that I'm aware of.
So it's closed, so.
I would move to approve Mr. Collins. We have one applicant.
Have we sent you this stuff?
Well, it just closed today. No, I haven't.
In that case, let's, let's.
Yeah, I'll speak with Diane, let's see.
Let's continue this. Okay, no problem.
I'll email her right now.
I have it. I can forward to you if I go home.
That'd be good. Thank you.
I know he's been in touch with Ms. Lightsy.
Oh, he has been. Okay. I'll reach out to her as well.
But I'll send it to y'all before I go home.
Okay.
I will point out that we have an HDRA at-large opening that closed last week, and we had no applicants for that. All of us need to work on that, and we can reopen it, but, and we will reopen it. But let's, let's open it until the second meeting of April, which would be the 22nd, okay?
So that's a HTRA board?
Yeah, that's an at-large position. Now, Ward Two has an additional position, and I would again strongly encourage y'all to, and we'll again open that one until the 22nd of April, and give y'all an opportunity to arm twist a citizen or two in West Homewood. We have Homewood. I do. I also have, I also have a nephew over there, so, anyway, and a son-in-law. Homewood Environmental Commission. Interviews are scheduled for April to, two individuals to be interviewed at 5:15 and 5:45 PM, so I would request that as many of y'all as possible plan on being there for that. Okay. We'll move on. The challenge is, if I've counted correctly, and I, again, if, we have 16 additions to the agenda, so bear with me as we work through these, okay? We have one committee referral item. It's 220319, which is a, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks. Don't mess me up on this. All right. 220319, request for consideration of agreement between the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham and the City of Homewood concerning the Homewood citywide sign code. This has been requested by Brett Tames, and will be assigned to finance. Mr. Jones, okay. We have one consent agenda, which is 020219, which is a request for consideration to purchase the alley adjacent to 405 Cliff Place, requested by Michael Thomason, Greg Cobb, BEZ. And again, that's a consent item. All right. Under Old Business, 060319, request for consideration to work in the city right-of-way to construct new stone landing 12-inch retaining wall, okay, and new stone steps extending to street at 1505 Ridge Road, requested by Steve Martin, Wyatt Pugh with our BEZ department. 070319, request for consideration to keep worksite fencing in city right-of-way during construction of new hotel on 18th Street, requested by David Green with Robinson Morton Construction, and Wyatt Pugh with BEZ. 010319, request for consideration of placing full-page ad for the city in Homewood Magazine, a Chamber of Commerce publication, at a cost of $1,740. This is the nonprofit rate, requested by Barry Smith. 120319, request for presentation of city of commerce updates, requested by Alex Wyatt and Meredith Drennan. 270119, request for consideration to add stop signs at intersection of Woodbine Drive and Lakeshore Drive, requested by Stephanie Holly and Barry Smith. 020319, request for consideration for stop R-Yield sign at Manchester and Fairfax, requested by Jennifer Foster and Jennifer Andress. 030319, request for consideration of placing stop signs at West Homewood Park, requested by Berkeley Squires. 040319, request for consideration to move the two on-street handicap parking spaces at the intersection of Oxmore Road and Peerless Avenue, requested by Randy Hambley. Under New Business, 200319, request to authorize the mayor to sign a funding agreement with Aldott for project number S is in SAM, T is in dash 037-dash-999-dash-020, for resurfacing various streets in Homewood, requested by Melody Salter, our city clerk. All right, 230319, which is, a request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Aldott concerning the maintenance of public right-of-way at Shades Creek Parkway, requested by Greg Cobb. 240319, request to authorize the city to participate in the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, presented by the Wyland Foundation and Toyota, requested by Amy Milan with our Homewood Environmental Commission and council member, Mr. Higginbotham. 210319, request for consideration of an ABC 220 beer brew pub license for the Grocery Brew Pub LLC DBA, doing business as the Grocery Brew Pub, located at 2823 Central Avenue, Suite 107, requested by Melody Salter, our city clerk. And that should be it. Bear with me one second while I count. One. That's it. All right. So the chair would welcome a motion for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. McCluskey. All in favors? Wait a second. What?
We didn't include the ordinance for our trip.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did.
It's not ready.
Mr. Kendrick?
It's not ready.
I have an ordinance. I don't have the ma.
I'm.
Randy didn't have it.
Randy didn't have it.
Okay. I only took it off because I was told to take. No problem, no problem. Right, let's try again. All in favor of the amended agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, good. Let's get started. So, on the consent agenda, chair would welcome a motion and second for approval. Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Mr. Wyatt. Any further discussion? If there be none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Okay, Old Business agenda. Let's move on to first item, which is 220219, request to remove the City Light Adventure, requested by Mr. Chris Tucker. There was some concern about the exact legal description of a location, and Mr. Tucker, we're going to leave it to you to tell us about it.
We were not prepared last week. We thought y'all were going to kind of approve it, then we would write that up. But this week, we have two choices for y'all, so, depending on whichever one y'all like. The first one, Vicki, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The first one, Vicki in Engineering drew up. That will work. Mr. Kendrick wanted to tighten it down, recommended tightening it down to that size. The second option, which is behind.
Let me explain that. We don't want to include your driveway in our easement that we would have to maintain.
Sure, sure.
So if anybody has a question about that, that's.
These options on the map.
The first one's got a drawing and a zoom out of the.
Derek, go ahead. This is what you're.
It is, yeah. That will work. The, the light pole will be approximately two feet away from the driveway, which is doable. Large construction trucks are eight and a half, nine feet wide, plus their mirrors on the side, so it'd be tight. The second legal description I wrote up, and it would allow the pole to be three feet away from the driveway. Either one's fine, but either one will work. I prefer to be a little bit further away. I prefer to be farther away from the pole, so nobody hits it.
But is that putting it closer to 280? I mean.
It's putting it closer to 31, yeah. Away from the driveway, yes, sir.
31, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Mr. Wolverton?
I know this light pole in question wasn't.
You need the microphone.
Sorry. The light pole in question had not been operational. I don't know how long construction was going to be, but I guess I wondered how, talking about putting a new pole back up, and whether or not that would, you know, we would have to worry about the construction trucks if we weren't going to put it up right away.
Question is when?
I think it could be done either way. I think the most efficient way is just go ahead. You go ahead and dig the cylinder two feet wide, and you go ahead and pour a new slab, and then it goes from existing location to the other location within minutes.
Yeah, can I comment on that? I'd say we need to move it over there. Based on the feedback from the neighborhood, I think they want, I think we move the light up as soon as we can.
You're saying as close to 31 as we can get?
No, I'm saying as soon as possible. Answering Mr. Wolverton's question as far as when. We don't need to delay on that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. That's why I was asking. And I didn't know if we had a pole already on hand that we were going to replace it with, or if we.
It's the same one, just moving.
Yeah, we're just moving the pole.
It's the same pole.
But the pole isn't working.
The light's not working.
The bulb.
Okay, my question would still be.
Yeah, I think we need to make it moving.
Moving that pole is going to make it work suddenly?
We're not, we're not moving the pole to make it work. We're moving the pole for Mr. Tucker's driveway.
And we will replace the light.
It's either the bulb.
I'm trying to establish if the light is not working because the bulb is burnt out, or if there's a functional problem with the pole itself, and so we're moving a pole that doesn't operate, no matter what we do to it.
That is above my pay grade, but my point is, we need to have an operational light as soon as possible.
I'll either replace the light bulb or make sure they fix whatever's wrong with it.
You're committed to an operational light.
Let's, let's go ahead and make it operational since we're moving it, so. Yes, sir. We can do that if y'all want me to. I prefer stuff to match, but it's up to y'all.
We prefer LED.
Okay, let's do that.
I know, I understand. So if there are another, thank you, sir. I appreciate. If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Yeah.
And I'm looking at Ward Five.
Move with the three foot. The additional foot would be more purple.
Second.
So a foot closer to Highway 31, just for, okay. So we have a motion from Mr. Wright, second from Ms. Andress. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. That'll be. All right, so that's Resolution 1939 for 2202. We're going to move, we're going to get out of order. Ms. Salter?
Who's the go-to? Who's the company of the easement?
Which I know you love. We're going to go to.
See, there's an easement document.
270119, which is a request for consideration to add stop signs at the intersection of Estine Drive and Lakeshore Drive, requested by Stephanie Holly and Barry Smith. I'm going to not only turn it over to Mr. McCluskey for a report, but he's requested that a certain number of citizens be allowed to talk, and I, and we've agreed to that. So, Mr. McCluskey, go.
Yes. I apologize for further request. Thank you for moving it up. But there were some neighbors from that area that actually walked into committee meeting later than the timeframe, so they were not, they did not have a chance to speak, so I thank you for allowing them to do that. But based off of the, the recommendation that came out of committee was to add a stop sign on Lakewood Drive only, and the motion was passed four to zero. And it says, all, all it says is Wolverton, but that's not right. There was somebody else that voted, that made a, that made a second on that, so, either way.
We were in a hurry, but we will fill it in.
Listen, I understand. I know you were, I know, I know. We were, we were trying to fly through there, so if we, we do have an opportunity, again, this is not a public hearing, so I don't want this to take forever. So if you can, just come in and speak a little bit, and then we can, and you'll have to sign in up front as well, please.
As you've had to do in the past, unfortunately.
But it's not Lakeshore.
It's, it's Lakewood. Yeah, it's Lakewood. Yeah, it's correct.
Did I say Lakewood or Hope? I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm so sorry. I said, I said it incorrectly. It is Lakewood, of course. I'm not going to hide behind my age on that. Yes?
Okay. Hi. I'm the initial one that requested this other stop sign on Woodbine. I understand that there was a traffic study done, and it was relayed to me that the traffic study did not show much speeding. A couple things about that. One, the speed limit on our street is 25, and the top recorded speeds when the traffic study were done was 34. 10 miles an hour is, is a lot faster on a residential road saturated with kids. Number two, we were told to tell our neighbors that there would be targeted enforcement, so I'm sure that has a lot to do with the temporary slowing down of cars, knowing that they would probably be ticketed. The second thing is, there are, as the traffic study showed, not a lot of cars that drive up and down that road. So I would suggest that the problems with, with the stop sign going in, people worried about getting in and out of their driveways is not going to be much of a problem, because there's not going to be that many cars there holding them up. I'm trying to be emotional. As you can see, our life at home is very challenging. He is not my only child. It is like this all the time. They say that it takes a village. This is my village, and it is something so small, but it is big to us, and I'm asking for your help in keeping him safe, and simply making it a three-way stop, so that people have to pause before they get to our house and know if he's in the street or not, because it, he was stopped, and I'm doing my best. My husband's not here tonight. He wasn't here the other time I came. He's out of town all the time. I had to arrange sitters both times to be at these meetings. We just need help, and I would suggest that, not saying that anyone's problems matter more, but maybe ask yourself what we're asking. Is it more important than what people are opposing? And that's all I have to say. So, thank you. I would suggest making it a three-way stop and putting another stop sign on Woodbine.
Thank you.
Hey, my name's Lisa Morgan. I actually live on, at 1659 Lakewood Drive. I live in the corner house where the stop sign has been for as long as I've lived there, 31 years. And coming out of my driveway, it's kind of like if you come up Murray Hill. If you come up Murray Hill, there's not a stop sign, but you've got two roads, Lake Ridge that are coming, they both have stop signs. I just feel like I would go for a three-way stop sign. I'm fine with that. Or if you just do the two stop signs, both on Lakewood Drive, because it is a disaster. Woodbine. Both on Woodbine, because it is a disaster in our neighborhood. It really is. Kids fly over that hill, and it's just, it's just hard. And like, we have a lot of kids now. When our children were growing up, that was basically the only children in our neighborhood. Now we have.
We have so, I'm Mary Marshall Jones, and I live at 1776 Woodbine Circle. We have so many children in that neighborhood now.
New families. We love it.
If y'all are familiar, if you go around, going out on Woodbine, you start at that corner house. There's five in a row, and there's one on this side. And then you go through the stop sign, and there's one, two, three, I believe, and at least three on the other side. We've never had this many children. And my concern is the safety of all the children. Because I really, you know, I'm lucky. I'm at the bottom of a cul-de-sac on two acres. You know, I'm just, but I am concerned about the children. There are going to be more moving in.
Well, it's not only just the children, but it's also the drivers, the people that are walking, because we don't have sidewalks. We didn't get sidewalks when everybody else got sidewalks.
All we wanted was dutters.
I know, that's what we got. But that's okay. You know, we're the stepchildren, but we'll live with it. But that's the thing. When I come out of my driveway and I'm going up the hill, Woodbine is in front of me. If I want to take a left, I'm like pausing for quite a while, because I don't know who is flying over that hill, because no, there's not a stop sign.
Ladies, what specifically your request is, just for clarification?
I would love to have, I don't care if it's a three-way stop sign, but I want at least Woodbine stopped. I already have one in my yard, which I don't mind at all. I love it there, because they're supposed to stop, but as I'm sitting here waiting for my neighbor to get me, three people didn't stop at that stop sign. So we need a little bit more police enforcement, too, would be nice. But I would go for a three-way stop sign. You could put one across the street from me. If you put one on Woodbine, you know, we just need more stop signs.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Mr. Jones had a comment?
Well, I'm, I'm not on public safety, but I felt like the committee, we, we looked at, the committee looked at, at all different options, and we threw out various options in the, the one in our, in the last committee meeting, where the one stop sign for Lakewood Drive, the residents that were there agreed that, that, that's really the best way to go from my recollection. So obviously, we have people that feel differently, but we, Mr. Hambley recommended one-stop sign, I believe. So I, I don't know. I'm confused now, because I thought we had, we had the best solution for the street.
Ms. Smith, correct me if I'm wrong, but when it first, when, when this was brought out of committee the first time, it was to remove both?
No, no, no. It was, it was to remove.
It was to remove one on Woodbine, and then place one on Lakewood to where it was one.
Right. And then, and then the new motion was to leave the existing Woodbine stop sign where it is, and add the Lakewood stop sign coming on to Woodbine.
So essentially, Mr. Hambley's first recommendation was to take up the stop sign on Woodbine, and it would be one.
Correct. That's right. That's right.
Yes.
So we brought it back. Because that's going up the hill. The one that's currently there is kind of coming up a grade. Correct.
Well, it's, it's facing, it's going toward Columbiana.
Yeah, it's going toward Columbiana. I'm sorry.
I want to hear your comments. Please, please be brief. Ms. Holly?
I'm sorry. I was actually at the first safety meeting, and his original recommendation in every, it was even coded in there a minute, that said, he said, we could make a three-way stop. And there was a gentleman there, I don't remember who it was, that said, I don't think that anybody's opposed to making it a three-way stop. That was at the first safety meeting. Then there was a second one that we weren't all aware of, and there were only a few members there. But I am the original one that proposed that what was asked for was to make a three-way stop. And something we're also not considering is there is a very limited line of sight because of the hill. But forget, even if you're going to speed limit, you cannot see what's over that hill unless you have to pause, which people aren't doing.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And ma'am, if you want to speak, real quickly, the microphone.
Okay. 25, 26 years ago, when the, oh, I thought.
No, the microphone, microphone. See, this is being livestreamed and.
I'm loud enough, aren't I? Anyway, 25, 26 years ago, when they were doing the sewer.
Right.
We played musical stop signs. I mean, they went everywhere. Okay. It was recommended that we were going to have a three-way stop. Well, that three-way stop, the third one coming over that hill that got, we inherited because of the sewers, was supposed to be directly across Lakewood by Mrs. Harrison's mailbox. So I don't know where it came up. I spoke with, he said it was going to be next to the fire hydrant. Well, if it's next to the fire hydrant, you're going to be halfway through the intersection and have to stop.
That was the issue, Paul. Is that?
Well, I know, but it's, but it's, it shouldn't, how come it's changed from 25 years ago? The, there were supposed to be rules according to stop signs.
Ma'am, forgive me. We can't answer that, because none of us were on the council 25 years ago. I mean.
But aren't there rules that, I mean, I look at all the stop signs now, and every, they're all in a position a certain way.
I understand. And I would say to you that if you were to poll individual council members, you would see widely different opinions on how many stop signs should be in Homewood as a whole versus others of us who, who are, are comfortable with the more the merrier, but you know, that's.
Trust me, we were told by the state years ago that we had too many stop signs in Homewood, and we couldn't have any more.
I understand. We, we understand well. Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate
And I don't, and I don't think, based off of the.
The last, not this committee meeting that we just had, but the one before it, when it, when it first came out, that the, the suggestion of a stop sign being closer to the fire hydrant, we knew would not work, because again, you are put in the middle of the intersection. But again, as I recall, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as you're coming over that hill, the problem was, is if you moved the stop sign up.
You don't have enough time to stop.
Clo, yeah, closer to Columbiana. As you're coming over the hill, if you run right into it, I mean, you're not, you're not giving yourself enough time to actually come to a complete stop there, is what.
That's what I remember hearing, yes.
Okay. I mean, that's, somebody can tell me if I'm wrong. I don't know.
I think that, I think the placement of that stop sign was the difficulty, because there's not a, because that's not a true three-way intersection. It's not a T-intersection. So there's not a location that makes sense to put that downhill stop sign that doesn't prevent, I mean, cause more problems than it prevents. And then also, with the first meeting, we hadn't gotten the results of that traffic study yet.
Correct.
The, the results of that traffic study were presented at that second meeting. So the, the, that information was not available to us, the fact that there weren't heavy speeding, there wasn't heavy speeding going on. There was very little traffic at all, and the traffic that was there wasn't, wasn't speeding, but that wasn't presented to us until that second meeting, which made the decision.
Okay, let's back up a little bit, if we can. The recommendation, for clarity, from Public Safety is?
From, from Public Safety, tonight's meeting was that there was an addition to, an additional stop sign to be placed on Lakewood Drive. I'm guessing it's Drive.
Okay, so therefore we.
And that was it.
Therefore, we do have a motion from Public Safety. Mr. Kendrick, can we begin with the first rating?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood, and to provide penalties for the violation thereof, be ordained by the city council as follows, that every person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle in a southerly direction on along Lakewood Drive and said city shall cause the motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection of Lakewood Drive with a northerly right-of-way line of Woodbine Drive. Two, that any violation of this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor, and any person found violating the ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. And the next section is the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erected appropriate signs, stop signs at the intersection described in one above, and that this ordinance shall become effective. become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council, approval by the mayor, as otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Motion for unanimous consent?
I'm sorry, what, what was that?
All right, Mr. Jones, his, motion for unanimous consent, Mr. Jones has made the first motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wright. Roll call, please, Ms. Salter.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andress?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So, this would be ordinance, there with me?
Twenty-seven thirty-four.
Twenty-seven thirty-four. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Can I ask a clarification?
May need some more discussion.
Yeah, I, I, if we, the stop sign, can we still discuss the other stop sign?
Yes.
Okay, let's, okay.
Absolutely.
Then I move to whatever you just said. Okay.
So we have a motion for Ms. Andress, do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wright. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
No.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Wyatt?
No.
Mrs. Andress?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So that passes seven to three, and that is ordinance twenty-seven thirty-four.
Are we sending this back to committee also?
No. No, 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 we have...
If we need to, if we need to have additional discussion for the one-stop sign that is left...
Bring another item?
To figure out something else that we will put another item together.
Okay. Thanks, I was just making sure that...
I'll write more comments.
We, we need, again, I said this earlier, think outside the box. There, there might be other solutions we haven't thought of, that we need to look at, and maybe Mr. Hamley could potentially foster. So, I mean, if, let's look at different ways to handle that, as opposed to just looking at additional stop signs, sir.
I agree. And, and citizens who are here, we've added a stop sign. We have not dismissed your concerns, and we will be looking at that. So, let's get the additional stop sign up, and let's see if you neighbors don't start seeing some positive results as, as, as a result of that. We hope so. Okay? Thank you. All right, next item, oh nine oh three nineteen, public hearing set for April eighth, twenty nineteen, at six P.M. For consideration to amend the development plan at twenty-seven sixty-two and twenty-seven fifty-six B.M., Montgomery Street. Applicant is Coker Holdings LLC for owner Tim Coker, for the purpose to relocate an existing commercial building and replace with a new two-story, six-thousand-square-foot mixed-use building. And we would add that the planning commission has a unanimous vote of six-zero in favor of this recommendation. And this was put forth by Wyatt Pugh. So, this public hearing is set for April eighth, twenty nineteen, at six P.M. All right, next item would be oh six oh three nineteen, which is a request for consideration to work in the city right-of-way to construct new stone landing, twelve-inch retaining wall and new stone steps extending the street at fifteen oh five Ridge Road, requested by Steve Martin and Wyatt Pugh with our BEZ department. Let's go with a report from special ish, special issues, don't try to say that quickly. Mrs. Smith?
Um, yes. We, we had our meeting before council meeting tonight, and heard from both affected parties, and the ultimate decision was a motion to approve from, I thought it was Ms. Andress? I think it was. It was Ms. Andress to, made the motion, and Mr. Gualtney seconded it, and then the motion failed with a vote of two to three.
Okay. So we have a, a report from special issues, and we have a motion as well as special issues as recommendation. So, all in favor of this request, signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying no.
No.
No. Okay. Sixteen oh three nineteen is denied. Oh seven oh three nineteen, request for consideration to keep the worksite fencing in city right-of-way during construction of new hotel on Eighteenth Street. David Green with Robbins and Morton Construction, Wyatt Pugh with BEZ. Report from special issues, please, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's me.
I'm sorry, that's you.
Ooh, sorry. Been a long night. We met, obviously, right before here, and we voted to approve the, allowing the fencing to stay in the city right-of-way. Ms. Andress made the motion, Mr. Gualtney seconded it, and it was a five to zero vote.
All right, so we have a motion from special issues, any comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Do we go ahead and sign that a resolution number, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, if you can, or...
Let's do that, okay?
Nineteen forty.
So that'd be resolution nineteen forty, yes. And we'll move on. Next item is twenty-two oh nine seventeen, did I, did I add that to the agenda? Twenty-two oh nine seventeen, which is the request for update on Homewood's Board of Education Bond Construction Project and Funding, requested by Mr. Jones? I did not.
No, no, we, no, sir, that, we just carried that over.
We carried that over. Okay, that's good, never mind. Thank you. Okay, oh one oh three nineteen, request for consideration of placing a full-page ad for the city in Homewood Magazine, a Chamber of Commerce publication, at a cost of one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, the nonprofit rate, requested by Ms. Smith. Report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee met today about five-twenty or so, and, and voted five to zero to, to approve this expenditure, and so that, that'd be resolution nineteen forty-one, five to zero out of finance.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that, as Mr. Jones pointed out, is nineteen forty-one. All right, twelve oh three nineteen, request for presentation of Chamber of Commerce updates, requested by Mr. Wyatt, provided by Ms. Drennan. Report from finance is basically an acknowledgement, I guess, right?
Yeah, yes, sir, this, this doesn't require a resolution, this is just a report we accepted, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate that, and we'll move on. Okay, oh two oh three nineteen, request for consideration for a stop or yield sign at Manchester and Fairfax, requested by Jennifer Foster and Jennifer Andress. Report from public safety, Mr. McCleskey.
Yes, Mr. President, based off the information and recommendation from Randy Hamley of the Traffic Maintenance Division, a, the committee voted four to zero to install a stop sign on, again, Fairfax onto Manchester, is that correct? Ms. Andress?
On Fairfax, yeah.
Yes, on Fairfax. And that was four to zero.
All right, so we have a report from public safety, first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
An ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood and provide penalties for violations thereof, be ordained by the City Council as follows, that every person operating a motor vehicle in a northerly direction on along Fairfax Drive in the city shall cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection of Fairfax Drive with a southerly right-of-way line of Manchester Lane in the city. Section two, no person shall park within thirty feet of intersection of Fairfax Drive and Manchester Lane. Section three, if any part of this ordinance declared to be invalid, all other parts remain in full force of effect. Section four, the person found guilty of violating this ordinance be guilty of a misdemeanor shall be punished as provided by ordinance, section one dash eight, and the last section that provision, this one shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council or approval by mayors, otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent. Motion by Mr. McCleskey, second by Mr. Wyatt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andress?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this will be ordinance twenty-seven thirty-five. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Motion from Mr. McCleskey, second from...
Second.
Ms. Andress, roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andress?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so twenty-seven thirty-five is approved unanimously. Oh three oh three nineteen, request for consideration for placing stop signs at West Homewood Park, report, Mr. McCleskey.
Um, yes, Berkeley Squires from the Homewood Parking Rec is requesting stop signs up at the small ballfields at the top of West Homewood Park, where the, the crosswalk goes across the street from the parking lot, and the committee voted four to zero. Mr. Wyatt made the motion, Mrs. Andress seconded to approve that crosswalk, or that stop, those two stop signs.
All right, so we have a motion from public safety. Did, did we, I'm sorry, did we have a, an ordinance there?
I'm gonna read you one.
Oh, great, good. Okay, that being the case, I'll let you have, read it, please, sir.
An ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood and provide penalties for thereof, be ordained by the City Council as follows, that every person, firm, or operating a motor vehicle in a northerly direction on West Homewood Park, in, in West Homewood Park shall come to complete stop intersection of the drive with the pedestrian crosswalk. Section two, that no person, firm, or corporation shall cause or be parked a motor vehicle within thirty feet of that intersection. Section four, the violation of this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor, and any person found guilty of violating them shall be punished as provided by Section one dash eight of the Code of Ordinances. Section four, that the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erected appropriate stop signs at that intersection described in one above. Section five, the provision of ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council.
Thank you, sir. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent. Motion from Mr. McCleskey, second from Mr. Gualtney. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andress?
Yes.
No?
Oh, I said yes, sorry, yes.
I'm sorry. I said yes. Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so twenty-seven thirty-six is passed unanimously, we'll move on to oh four oh three nineteen. Request for consideration to move the two on-street handicap parking spaces at the intersection of Oxmore Road and Peerless Avenue, requested by Randy Hamley. Report from public safety, Ms. McCleskey.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, the committee met and discussed this issue, and based off the recommendation from Randy Hamley of the Traffic Maintenance Division, he would like to move the two handicap spaces to get them away from the traffic loop, and he can do all of this in-house, and it was motion by Mr. Wyatt, second by Mrs. Andress, and that was five to zero.
All right, good, so first reading?
I don't have that...
You don't have that one, okay, so we're gonna carry this over.
Somebody didn't know where everyone was moving.
No problem, we'll carry this one over. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, committee referral agenda, chair would welcome a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Mr. Gualtney, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is approved. Now we'll move on to new business, and we're gonna jump around a little bit. New, twenty-three oh three nineteen, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with ALDOT concerning the maintenance of public right-of-way at Shades Creek Parkway, requested by Mr. Greg Cobb, and we're gonna vote on this tonight. Chair would welcome, oh, Mr. Cobb, come forward, sure.
You were going right where I was, sir.
I know.
I was just gonna request that we handle this tonight, to get this project moving, it's the last piece we need to put in the Rumsen sidewalk, sidewalk on Shades Creek Parkway and the crosswalk. And it's simply that, when we do that work at DOT, on a DOT right-of-way, we agree to maintain it.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion from...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones, second from Mr. McCleskey, y'all don't get a chance, sorry.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Any, y'all, y'all are dying to speak, so who's gonna talk in Ward four or Ward five?
I'll defer my, my motion to Ms. Andress.
Oh, this is, y'all, this is so exciting. I, I had somebody just, this week, tell me.
We've changed it to a motion by Ms. Andress and a second by Mr. Wright.
Why?
Wright, is it Peter?
This is a big deal. Mr. Cobb, thank you, Mr. Mayor, J.J., y'all, thank you so much.
The answer is not always no, is it? This is, this is...
It was for a lifetime, ten years.
This is a demonstration, this is a demonstration of that.
That's right, that's right.
You gotta ask him five times, okay?
Yeah, a hundred and five, a hundred and five.
Thank you, Greg, for your persistence. I know you know what this means, and you probably have been hearing this, trying to get us across there for more than twenty years, I bet.
It's been going on a long, long time. If, if everything's signed tonight, the mayor's got that copy and all's approved, I'll make sure I got all my ducks in a row, and I'm gonna drive it down to DOT and hand deliver it tomorrow.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Not Montgomery, just two eighty.
I saw, I saw an individual out there playing Frogger today. I really did. He was, he was, he was like in, he was like in starting blocks, waiting to run across Lake Shore.
I saw, I saw an individual out there playing Frogger today. I really did. He was, he was, he was like in, he was like in starting blocks, waiting to run across Lake Shore.
Can I thank you enough?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So this will be Resolution 1942. And it is approved unanimously. Okay, let's move on. 180319, Request set a public hearing for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 2823 Central Avenue, Suite 107. Requested by Rayford Cook, Greg Cobb with the BEZ Department. We will set that public hearing for April the 8th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Next, 190319, Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of March 11th, 2019 through March 17th, 2019. Mr. Jones.
Yes, I will send this to Ward Five. So, Mr. Wyatt.
And Ward Five very happily accepts it. Did look at the receipts this weekend. Thank you, Robert. He's not here. But thank you to Robert for answering questions and all in good order. And I'm pleased that I had a short stack this week and look forward to handing the baton over to Ward One. So I would ask that receipts be approved.
So we have a motion from
Mr. Wyatt.
Mr. Wright.
And I'll second.
Do we have a second from Mr. Jones? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. And that is Resolution 1943. Next, 200319, Again, Request to authorize the mayor to sign a funding agreement with ALDOT for project ST 037-999-020 for resurfacing various streets in Homewood requested by Melody Salter and our city clerk. I think this is pretty self-explanatory. Any questions?
Mr. Cobb just left, but what I understood, this has to do with the paperwork we need with ALDOT for the pedestrian bridge.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Ms. Andrews, you're on.
This is, this is a transfer of money. ALDOT is giving us $100,000 for paving projects. And we're going to allocate $100,000 from the city towards the bridge. So it's, it's not coming, it is coming from us, but it's not coming from us. So that's what this is.
So, so in other words, we, we've already allocated $200,000 towards this. Now we're going to be asking for an additional $100,000 to be allocated because we received an extra $100,000 from the State Department for Streets.
So it is basically a come and go out.
That's correct. It's a wash. That's right.
Okay, good. All right. Well, we can handle that.
Yep.
All right. All in favors, please say aye.
Is there a second on that?
No, I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought Andrews was the first.
Always. We, we just assume. Ms. Andrews is the first. Mr. Wright is the second. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought that was just
We're going by wards now.
SOP. Right. All right.
Motion for more.
Is there any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is Resolution 1944. And that is approved. Finally, 210319, Request for consideration of an ABC 220 brew pub license for the Grocery Brew Pub LLC doing business as the Grocery Brew Pub located at 2823 Central Avenue, Suite 107 requested by Melody Salter.
Ms. McCluskey, we, we passed the alcohol, the restaurant retail.
I was going to ask Mr. McCluskey if he knew.
I don't, I don't.
That's why, that's why I was giving him the answer because I didn't get a chance to tell you. We passed the restaurant retail, but now they actually want their brew, brewery license from ABC. And all the zoning has been okayed by Mr. P. So this is to give them the brewery license, not just the restaurant retail that y'all passed last time.
Okay. Is
How long?
Or can we use the same approval from police and fire?
Yeah, we just, we just put it back on here for you because it's a new number just for y'all to, yes, the police and fire approval stays the same is what I was talking. Yes. We got, and we got approvals from Mr. P. That it was okay.
Mr. Kendrick, are you close, are you comfortable with that? Yes, sir. Okay.
I'll move to have no objection to the issuance of the license.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Wyatt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And that is passed. All right. We come to that portion in the meeting where we turn
Wait, I think you missed one.
Did I? What did I miss?
Yeah, you missed 2404 something.
Mayor's challenge?
I don't know what that is, but.
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
Timeout.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Okay, I did. Yes. 240319, Request to authorize the city to participate in the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation presented by the Wyland Foundation in Toyota. And I don't think that means I have to recuse myself. Only if you get money, not if you give it. That's right. There you go.
You can make that legal conclusion.
Request by Amy Milan with our We have a motion, a resolution, so just do a motion and approval by the council. There you go. And Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Higginbotham, will you fill everyone in on this?
I will do my very best, Mr. Chairman. And I, I apologize for the 11th hour on this. I know that there have been communications with the mayor's office about this and from Amy. And she reached out to me after the council agenda was already approved because the, the challenge actually goes on for the entire month of April from the 1st through the end of the month. And JJ told me between a couple of the committee meetings tonight that the mayor said he was on board. So essentially what the challenge is, is cities nationally have this friendly competition about ways that they can reduce water usage in their communities. And it is not a commitment on the part of the city to do anything in particular in terms of doing water, in reducing water usage. In fact, the people who are agreeing to do, reduce water usage are the individual citizens of the city. What the city does is say, hey, there's this program going on. We encourage you to go on and, and choose some of the ways you might want to reduce the way you use water. I went on there and went through the whole process myself. And the kinds of things that they're asking people to agree to do is have a full load of clothes when they wash clothes and have a full load of dishes when they wash dishes and, you know, properly dispose of household hazardous waste and recycle. I mean, there's nothing too radical in, in their list. Plus, it's just the citizens voluntarily agreeing to do these things. And what happens is when they go into the online site and they voluntarily agree to do them, their answers are captured and assigned as a credit to Homewood. And so you compete against cities of similar size. I think the group we would be in is from 5,999 to 30,000. And so the, the cities that are competing are based on size. The city itself's not really agreeing to do anything other than to promote this amongst the residents and to encourage them to save water in the month of April. I assume they target April because it's Earth Day in April. Again, I apologize for the 11th hour, but I was just, I'm trying to handle this request the best I can. But I know the mayor has gotten information about it as well. And if he wants to add anything or share anything about his comfort level with it, I would welcome that at this time. I understand he's okay with it.
Yeah.
Did he speak for you, Will?
Well, just briefly, because I, I am aware of it. And it's never a, a bad thing to conserve water. I think we've all seen that when we went without rain. And if any of you has ever walked across Lake Purdy, that's a pretty amazing thing. So, never hurts. I think one of their other things was like, don't let the water keep running while you're brushing your teeth. So, but it's really the things that we, we asked people not to do when we were seriously in a water shortage. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The other thing I would say is it's kind of fun when you go in and you fill out the questionnaire and say what you're willing to do. Because at the very end, it tells you how much of an impact you're going to have personally. It tells you how many gallons you're going to save by the choices you made and the things you committed to do as a citizen. But it's really citizens competing against citizens. All they want the city to do is to, to say, yeah, we're on board and get the mayor to agree to, that we're going to participate and, and to let people know what's going on. Yes, well, Mr. Chairman, you, I can't recognize.
What do we win?
That's a great question. I, I do not remember what the prizes are. I, I don't, yeah, a bottle of water. No, I think, I think actually the city doesn't win. The individual citizens have an opportunity to win by participating. So I want to say it's some sort of vehicle, but don't hold me to that. Maybe we want Toyota as one of the sponsors.
That's what, that's what the hope was. Is this a motion from you, Mr. Higginbotham?
I move that we agree to participate in the challenge for the month of April and encourage our citizens to go online and, and, and agree to whatever they feel comfortable agreeing to in terms of saving water.
All right. So Mr. Higginbotham has a motion. Would you, anyone join him as a second? Second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It was more enthusiastic when y'all thought you could win a card.
Yeah, exactly.
You can throw that in there still.
But you may never know who won it. With that, Mayor.
Happy spring break.
Yay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gualtney.
I've been in 30 years.
Mr. Higginbotham.
I just share the mayor's happiness at spring break and encourage everybody to be safe.
Mr. Wolverton.
I feel like we've had a lot going on in West Homewood. We had the color run at Hall Kent Elementary yesterday. I've still got blue paint on my back to prove it. I could not scrub it off last night. But it was a great event. I think some others are going to talk about something else that was going on yesterday afternoon in the neighborhood as well. So we're just excited about all that's going on, excited about the pool getting going this summer and everything really that's, that's going on in the neighborhood. So thank you guys for everything that has been done in the past to help facilitate that moving forward. And then since we're not meeting next week.
We're meeting, we are meeting April 1st.
Correct. So I was going to say, since we're not meeting next week, this might be our last meeting with my family being a family of five. So we're, we're waiting. My wife is eagerly waiting to evict this last one. So.
I saw that on Facebook. I thought that was an interesting term. I read it to my wife and she said, what does he mean by that? I don't understand.
She's, she's done.
I understand.
She thinks things are well cooked and ready to, ready to come out. So.
I always believe the lady in there.
So hopefully I will be here on the 1st, but no, no guarantees. And if I am, there's a good chance I'll have an extra one.
Best wishes. Mr. McCluskey.
Yes, is, is April 1st also?
No, April 1st is committee.
So you're going to take that out on the 10th?
Always.
Yeah. How, well, are you, you going to set that for, okay, how long do you, 15, 15 minutes?
Speak by.
Really?
That would trick.
Okay. You can be 5:15.
Okay, I'll, I'll take 5:15. I'm, I'm going to need every 30 minutes, if not more.
I mean, if you need it, let's say 45 now.
Let's do, let's do till 6, 5, 6. I apologize, but we just, we couldn't get through.
So you're doing 5:15 on Public Safety for April 1st?
Yes.
Yes.
Five for Finance, 5:15 for Public Safety, and 6 o'clock, I'm sorry, go.
No, 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 no.
6 o'clock for you, Ms. Smith, right?
Yes. And I'm, I'm probably going to need it for 30 minutes because we have the television.
I know. I understand. Mr. McCluskey, continue.
And it is with deep regret that I have lost my championship. Oh, no. Yes. If the Corn Palooza, it just, it killed me. It absolutely
You gave it a good shot.
Was it close? So it's, we made it to the semis. We made it to the semis.
That's pretty good. But who did you, who, to whom did you?
We, we didn't lose. We got nine.
Gualtney said it wasn't really close.
It was not. So, Mr. Gualtney is correct. It was, it was a shalike.
I've got the pictures. It was bad for him.
Whoa.
So, but, but let me tell you something, how, how much fun it was had. There were so many people that were out there, not just players, but, you know, visitors, family, everybody came out there watching. It was the, the athletic foundation put on a heck of a tournament. It was, it was fun. Alex had a big cannon. So y'all that were, that were there and certainly thinking of that. And that's it. Oh, oh, I wanted to thank, lastly, thank the mayor so much for the month of April. You're not going to shower the whole time.
I was going to pee outside.
Let's do something different.
Ms. Cromwell, do not put that in Homewood store, please.
Hey, Mayor, you're broadcasting.
Mr. Jones, please, take it away.
And, and let, let me tell you, you need to, this whole story that we're talking about, we'll come back to you, I promise. Because I remember leaving a council meeting one night and, and I had just approved the Salamander Crossing. And I was the one that, you know, that voted. And the Associated Press actually called me and wanted to know all about the Salamander Crossing. And it was, it was all over the news. And so you just never know when you're going to get calls.
I understand.
So just be prepared for the, the water. Mayor, just get ready for that call. So anyway, 5 o'clock, everybody be safe. I'll be in, I'll be in Ireland. So.
Great. Mrs. Smith.
Okay, I'm going to take six and I will go till 6:30 for Mr. Brett. And to continue my soccer updates, Mr. Wright came out and watched the Varsity Boys play against Mountain Brook, which was a pretty contentious game, actually. Ended in a 2-2 tie. Yeah. Next home game is tomorrow night against Huffman. And they are currently 9-0 and 3, I think, is where we are at this point. So still kind of getting our feet under us, but they're fun to watch if y'all want to come out and, like Mr. Wright did, support the boys.
Thank you. Mr. Wyatt.
So I will set P and D for Mr. Tames. We'll set it for 6:30. My guess is we only need 10 minutes unless you think there's going to be a big deal with signage. Okay. We'll only need about 10 minutes, Mr. Wright. So you can have 6:40. Couple things. Homewood High School hosted the, their first track meet out at the new track this weekend on Saturday. And it went great. Track looks great. All the facilities and field events, all of that was, was really great. There were a lot of compliments on the, the new stuff out there. So, and Homewood actually won both, which is a big deal because it's like 28 schools that show up for this one. So this is a, this is a big meet. Secondly, thank you to everyone who showed up for Corn Palooza. Patrick did do well. He got to the semis. Other council teams did not fare quite as well. They may not have even made it to the knockout round.
I didn't say anything.
But he's right. It was, it was a lot of fun. It was easily the biggest crowd we've had. The new location at Pizzeria GM was perfect. The weather, as my redneck will show you, was fantastic. Everything about it was great. We appreciate Ward Two's hospitality over there. And lastly, everyone have fun on spring break. I'll, I'll be in Ireland as well. So Walter and I are over there if y'all want to come over and have the meeting over spring break. We'll, we'll be happy to do that. But.
I'll get bored.
Yeah, let me know how that goes. Ms. Andrews?
I wanted to highlight at the track meet, my boys do not run track in the spring. They play tennis. But I did want to mention at the track meet, in the boys 3200, we had not, not we, of the, all the schools there, there were nine boys who ran the 3200 in sub 931. And that was like a state, like, that's like a, the most monumental day in like
Best year.
Yeah. I mean, that's nine, for nine kids to do that is amazing. And I heard the track was gorgeous and I'm excited. I will speak for the Homewood tennis team, which got, just got back from Decatur. And we spent all day Friday and all day Saturday in Decatur. And we had just a fantastic time. And this is a young team on the rise. And last year, the boys did not win until we got to sectionals. This year, we have won everything except for Hoover and Briarwood up till today. And then we did get beat by Pell City's in our section, but Hoover and Briarwood are not in our section and Pell City is. But we, we are, we are rising and young and aggressive. And it's just a gorgeous thing to watch that program take off and those kids play. It's been a lot of fun. So I encourage folks to come out and watch that. And then Mr. Wright will be there.
I will come watch tennis, just like I really did have a great time watching soccer. I've been, I've been out there before, but it was good watching them over at Mountain Brook. And they really had it in their hands. And let us look away a little bit. But guys, I really would, and I would encourage you all to, to get out there for the, the soccer games really are conveniently scheduled and at night and really a lot of fun. But so I will set Public Works for, it sounds like 6:40. Hopefully it'll go, hopefully it'll go to like 6:43 based on the number of items. And I think that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. And with that, we will stand adjourned until April the 8th. Thank you.